I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unregaled, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. and Mrs. Sanders, if you'd like to move over to the office. If you have a question, answer you. Well, welcome to everyone who is bearing out the cold. I guess necessarily say it's going to be a luxury evening or something like that on this floor. Our first item on the agenda will be the reorganization of our board, and I will let Dr. Kaiser have a minute here.
At this point in time, we call for nominations for the different board positions.
I don't think I have a president. And the entire school.
Which we can assist those.
My sister's not a president.
President, vice president, and secretary. The program procedure. So it would be appropriate thing to go ahead and put on the slate of nominated candidates for the officers of the, oh yeah, disclose nominations, any other nominations.
Close nomination.
Motion to close the nominations. At this point in time, we could go forward and approve the slate.
Make a motion to approve the slate.
Closing of nominations. Sorry, I need to go. Second.
Okay.
Closing of nominations.
We have a motion in the section.
All those in favor of closing the nominations, say aye.
Aye.
Nominations for the slate of officers have been.
So now we go through the vote on the slate.
Yes.
Make a motion to approve the slate.
I'll second that. All those in favor of to approve the slate as presented, say aye.
Aye.
We'll have this on the 2016, oh, that's already, 2016, 2017 year. Is the best part of the whole meeting. And we don't have Dr. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, we should add.
Make a motion to approve the reorganization.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the reorganization agenda, working the calendar, and the resolution as presented. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'm just a little ahead of myself, too excited to be a part of it. We don't have Dr. Hammack this evening, but we do have the to-be Dr. Bear. Right now, he's just Steve Bear. He will get us started on our Students of the Month for November and December.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome. Thanks for coming. This is the part of the evening that we love the most, to share about our students and the exciting things going on at our schools. Mr. Buckler, Mrs. Reed, and I, so Hornet Park Central and South Grove, as we shared with you at the last board meeting, have embarked on the Positive Behavioral Intervention Support Team, the PBIS initiative. Mr. Buckler shared last time, and it's my turn this time, to share with you where we are on that process. Last time, Mr. Buckler shared who would be serving on the team, and really, the objective. The objective of the team is to develop a profound focus on the behaviors we desire of our students at school. And so, really, being intentional in planning and teaching children what are appropriate behaviors at school, and how do we respond to conflict and things that may surface in a school setting. So today, I wanted to share where we are at this time. We've kind of entered the next step of the planning piece, where each school has created a matrix that detail out different environments in the school, and how students are to behave in each of those environments, and also, the appropriate adult behaviors and adult expectations and responsibilities. So, for example, at all three schools, our shared values are to be respectful and be responsible. So, we all have in our matrix how to be respectful and responsible in the cafeteria, what that looks like for a kindergartner up through a sixth grader, with right now, we're developing lesson plans to explicitly, excuse me, teach those behaviors. And then also, what should the adults in that setting be doing to help reinforce appropriate behaviors of being respectful, respectful and responsible. So the teams are all working hard right now to do that, and we have our next training day, I believe, on February 5th. So, we're thankful to be on that journey and excited to share updates with you at each of our meetings. So, I would like to now go ahead and transition to the exciting part, and that is to share about our Students of the Month. And as Mr. Bear explained, we'll be each sharing two, so I'll call one of my friends up, and then we'll call the other. So I would like to invite first, Mr. Chase Hamlin. So Chase, come on up. All right, good evening, Chase. From sweet Ms. Mazur, and she came this evening, did you see she came? She's so proud. She said, Chase has come so far since the beginning of kindergarten, and he is a joy to have in class. He always tries his best at his work, and he tries hard to listen at all times. He's a great friend to everyone, and he's always making us laugh in class. He has a great sense of humor. He listens very well when we're on the carpet, and he has made great progress this year. He lights up when he is able to help other people in our class. We are lucky to have him. And from our physical education, our literacy through movement teacher, Ms. Kaiser, she tickles me. She says, "Oh, Chase, will you ever stop growing? I tell you, by the end of the year, Chase might be as tall as me. Future basketball player, perhaps the next Larry Bird." Smiley face. "Chase is a great kid and a joy to have in class. No matter what we do, Chase is always smiling and having fun." Congratulations, Chase. So Hornet Park is proud to present Student of the Month, Chase. I'd like to invite up Ellie Graham. Ellie, come on up. From one of our staff, she says Ellie is the definition of a sweetheart, and I would have to agree. She always comes into class with a smiling face, gives the best hugs, which I'm receiving now, and sometimes brings me a beautiful picture to hang up on my door. As a matter of fact, I believe most of the pictures on my door are from Ellie. She works hard at everything she does, and I know I can always count on her to help with anything. I see Ellie on Mondays, and I know that if my week is off to a rough start, Ellie knows just how to brighten my day. She's a true joy to have in class. From Ms. Burns, she says Ellie is a very caring and respectful student. She works hard and is a good role model for others. She always brightens my day by writing sweet notes and pictures. And as a matter of fact, Mom Mary was just at our PTO meeting at Hornet Park and Central, and during that meeting, Ellie made me one of those set pictures. So, it's very sweet. She's a very sweet little girl. So Hornet Park is pleased to present Ellie Graham, Student of the Month.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Craig Buckler. I am the principal of the elementary, and unfortunately, neither of my Students of the Month are here this evening. So I will go ahead and read theirs, and then present their, actually, have the Student of the Month party on Thursday, so we'll read it on the next day. But I want to highlight first, Mrs. Wolf, our counselor at Central. Each December, she does the Beach Grove Project, and this year, she encouraged the families of our students to donate their fronts on greeting cards, which seems a little bit odd, but we send those to St. Jude's Ranch for children who provide care for abandoned, abused, and neglected children. And so, those boys and girls, they take those and turn them into new cards or new things to be used. Her goal was a thousand cards. That's what she set out when she was doing her lessons with the boys and girls in December. She sent an email last night, and she's at 3,641 cards. So, really, really a job well done. The impressive part of that is to show the boys and girls what that kind of translates to is, we have a hand representing each card, and so, if they come into the building, you can see the hands kind of spanning across the building, so the boys and girls have a visual of what that is. She is still collecting cards until the 29th of January. So, it's just the front of the card, you cut off the back, and then we send those fronts in. So that's really exciting and something that the boys and girls have really enjoyed watching that generosity grow. So I'm going to talk about both of our Students of the Month. I'm first going to start with Brayden Clark, and he is our Student of the Month for November. Brayden is a second grader in Ms. Kelly's class, who states that he is always setting a good example for how students should behave, and is always trying his best. He is always helpful to both the teacher and the other students in the classroom. He follows directions well, participates often in class. His confidence has certainly grown, and Ms. Kelly is excited to see how much more growth he is going to be able to show over the rest of the school year. In math success class, Miss Oka reports that Brayden has been a shining role model in class. His excellent behavior has been a model to the other students who are seated near him. She loves having him in her classroom. Finally, in music, Mrs. Ender states that Brayden is hardworking, respectful, and quiet member in the class. From myself, each day, Brayden greets me with a hello when he gets off the bus, and a goodbye and a good afternoon when he gets on. So it's a great way for me to start my day and to end it. I'm pleased that Brayden was selected as our November's Student of the Month. I'll ensure to get some certificates and a little star. Oliver Goggins was the December Student of the Month, and he's a third grader in Mrs. Duncan's classroom. Mrs. Duncan describes him as very polite and helpful. He is courteous and dependable. She can always count on him to be a model classroom citizen. In reading class, Ms. Schroeder Schmidt states that Oliver is a joy to have in class. He is a kind young man. Every day, he keeps his class focused and ready to learn. He is constantly setting a good example for his classmates. In applied technology, Mr. Adamson describes him as outstanding student. He is a very trustworthy young man and has the respect of both his teachers and peers. He is very skilled in applied tech and is able to help his peers as well. His professors are greatly appreciated. I echo those remarks. I've had the pleasure of knowing Oliver, his brother Lavander, and his brothers and sisters as they've come through the Beach Grove schools. I'm very pleased that he was selected as a December Student of the Month.
Thank you, Mr. Buckler.
A little bit about South Grove. Tomorrow, the fifth graders and the sixth graders are going to have a presentation from the Marion County Prosecutor's Office on cyberbullying. Can you think, fifth graders and sixth graders? But yes. More and more children are online these days, and the more we can educate them on the dangers of being online, the better off we think that they are going to be. So, parents are welcome to attend. The sixth grade, their presentation is at 9:00, and then the fifth grade's presentation is about 10:30. This is put on by the Marion County Prosecutor's Office, and every year, I sneak down to hear at least one of the presentations, and I always learn something for myself and my own two children. So, you are welcome to attend. And I want to thank Officer Mark Parker, our school resource officer, for arranging this for us. So if you have a fifth grader or sixth grader, you may want to ask them about it tomorrow evening. And next Thursday, January 21st, beginning at 9:15, is our annual South Grove Spelling Bee. So, parents, each classroom has two representatives, and we have notified the parents of those children, and they are welcome to attend. It's in the South Grove Gym next Thursday, the 21st. And I would like to introduce John Schlegel. Come on up, John. He is our South Grove Student of the Month.
And I want to say congratulations to John Schlegel. John is the son of Jerry and Eileen Schlegel. John is a sixth grader at South Grove. He is a media vocal, which means he works in the library, and he plays in the band. Mr. Carney, the band director, put it very simply. He said, "John Schlegel is one of the most polite students I've ever taught. He is attentive and has a positive attitude in class every day." Mrs. Johnson, John's fifth grade teacher, said, "John is not only an outstanding student academically, but a thoughtful and kind person as well. He is willing to help others, both in and outside of the classroom. He included others when they were being left out, settled differences with others diplomatically, and was kind and compassionate always." Sounds like a president. Seriously. "I was very fortunate to have him in my classroom. He is a very good example of what we want all South Grove students to be." And Mrs. Alkar, the music teacher, said these kind words. "I had the pleasure of having John in music class recently. We were studying the Beatles, and John, being a Beatles fan, was able to add some wonderful information to the class. I appreciate this very much. And I also might add that John is always a pleasure to have in class. He is eager to learn, he's responsible and reliable, and he is probably one of the most helpful and kind students that I've taught. He is a great friend to all students." And Mrs. Camprado, his teacher now, this is funny. "I would take an entire classroom full of John Schlegels. I've not had a student as polite and well-mannered as John in all my years of teaching. He is an absolute joy to teach, and his smile is contagious in the classroom. John is the definition of a leader. He's confident yet humble. He's sweet, kind, considerate, hardworking, focused, and extremely intelligent. His hunger to learn and enthusiasm to pave his own path for learning will ensure that John is successful in anything he strives to do in life. I'm so proud of John and feel lucky to have taught him this year. This boy will make a difference in the world." So congratulations, John.
I'm Tom Yar from Oak Middle School. A couple of quick items here from the last couple of days. Yesterday, we held our annual spelling bee at 9 o'clock in our main gym, and our top three finishers were third place Seth Rumbler, second place Olivia Keenan, and taking first place was eighth grader Hannah Chandler, and Hannah has been a Student of the Month for us as a seventh grader. That event was one of the best spelling bees we've had, I think, in some time. Mr. Bear officiated for us and did an outstanding job. I think we went 26 rounds, which was about 50 minutes. It was a long spelling bee, and it was a nail-biter at the end when we finally got down to the last two. It was exciting. Both today and tomorrow, today was seventh grade, tomorrow will be eighth grade, we will end up celebrating with 160 students that had all As, all As or Bs, or all perfect attendance for the second quarter of the school year, and we celebrate it with a pizza party and some activities in the gym. Today, we started a brand-new program in cooperation with Beach Grove High School. We have some mentors and tutors coming over for three days a week, and they're volunteering their time to do some extra tutoring for students that need it. We had 20 kids show up today, which was outstanding. Now for our Students of the Month. Our first student, Hannah Rowe, Hornet Park. Hannah is an excellent example of a Beach Grove hornet. Hannah is intelligent, polite, kind, and a pleasure to have in class. Hannah is an excellent student, maintaining her spot on the honor roll. Hannah participates well in class and is friendly to all of her peers. Hannah is an active member of the academic pursuit team where she excels. Hannah is also a fine example of actions speak louder than words. Every day, Hannah conducts herself in a way that makes her classmates take notice. Through her perfect conduct and high academic achievement, Hannah raises the bar for not only her classmates, but for her teachers as well. She's a student you look forward to teaching every day because she's going to give you 100% every day. Another staff member writes that it is an extreme pleasure to have Hannah in class. She is always respectful, helpful, and is a wonderful addition here at Beach Grove Middle School. She has a very creative mind and puts forth over 100% into everything she attempts. It is absolutely, I absolutely love that she is willing to try new things even when they seem difficult. She's always up for a challenge that will help her grow and improve, and exemplifies all of the qualities that make her an outstanding student. It doesn't surprise me that Hannah was chosen for Student of the Month. She embodies all of the qualities that we strive to see in our students. Hannah is well-deserving of Student of the Month and is a great example of what it means to be a hornet. Hannah's teachers are proud to name her this month's Student of the Month. Our next student of the month is Charlie Kossick. Charlie is a sweet young lady and a true joy to have in the classroom. She is a great role model for other students with her classroom behavior and work ethic. She is extremely cooperative with all requests. She gives in assignments, activities, her best effort while keeping a smile on her face. She asks questions when she does not understand, which further helps to demonstrate to others her desire to do well. Charlie would be a great best friend, as she truly seems to have an interest in others and their welfare. She is not the least bit the type of person that tries to seek attention or to be the center of attention. She is very much a team player, putting the group ahead of herself. Mrs. Newman writes that Charlie is a complete breath of fresh air to be around. She is often found greeting classmates and teachers with a simple hello or "How are you" today? She approaches all class assignments with a positive attitude and a willingness to always go above and beyond the assignment requirements. When a new student joins the class, Charlie can be found volunteering to help the student feel welcome while teaching her new classmates all of the class procedures. Charlie is a natural leader. We appreciate having her at Beach Grove Middle School. And Charlie was also our featured, one of our featured students of the weekend on Buzz and Hornet in the fall. So congratulations.
Liz Walters, still, I feel fairly new, principal of the high school this year, but we just finished our first semester, I think a pretty good semester. We celebrated fewer X and more As, interestingly enough, this last semester than we have in the last five years. So, we felt pretty good about that. We did focus some time over the break on rescuing some credits for students, had quite a few of those. We spent the last month or so really opening up discussion on what types of courses we can offer students as they make choices while life after high school. So, we want to concentrate our efforts on providing students opportunities to experience some of those skills as they take those courses for high school, and better prepare them for the choices they'll make after high school. So we'll open those up if we do schedule them for next year, and we're pretty excited about how those will pan out for students. I've started this past week, the second of three S2F meetings with our staff. All of the principals meet at least twice a year with every single staff member, just to touch base on data and the work throughout the year. And it's pretty amazing how much our staff cares about students. Every single meeting is focused on the work that our students are doing and ways that we can support them. So we'll spend the semester really looking at student performance at the high school and paying attention to ways to support our students and the skills that they will be expected to be able to perform in life after high school. We're excited about that. We also will start restorative practices training, sort of the secondary model of PBIS, and the high school and the middle school will start that this Friday, in fact, so more support for our students in sort of behavioral choices that they make. This is actually a really special time at the high school. This is the second semester of some of our seniors' senior year, so they will experience some lasts in high school for graduation this semester. So, we want to honor two of those seniors this evening. The first that'd like to join me is Kaylee Donahue. I sometimes chuckle because we go from those hugs where they're just sort of like clinging to you. We're just going to stand up here. You can hug me if you want to. She chose not to. Kaylee is one of our seniors. She's the daughter of Vanessa Barnes. Her GPA is at a stellar 3.96, and she comes in at a class rank of six in our senior class. Her school activities include marching band, winter guard, cross-country, track, she is a Hornet mentor, and part of the National Honor Society. Her volunteer community activities include after-school tutoring, Beach Grove Kids Sports Camp, DCI vendor, and salesperson. She plans to study pharmacy at Purdue University after graduation, and we have three teacher comments this evening for her. This is from Cecily Anderson. "Kaylee is very hardworking and puts her heart into everything she does. It is a privilege for me to say that she is a PGHS hornet." This is from Mrs. Shockey. "Kaylee is a wonderful role model and a great student. She is focused on her goal to be a pharmacist and is working hard to be sure her goal remains obtainable." Last but not least, from Mrs. Baker. "Kaylee represents all of the qualities we try to develop in a model student. She takes responsibility for her own learning, exhibits initiative when she needs assistance, gives up her time to help others who struggle academically, and because of her diligence and perseverance, Kaylee has evolved into a successful student and quality person." Please help me.
Now Ashley Rankin to join me. Also a senior, daughter of Amelia Rankin, Ashley comes in at a stellar grade point average of 4.15. She ranks fourth out of our senior class of 141 students. Her school activities are international club, where she was president, the spell bowl, the brain game, the academic team. She volunteers at the Illini Bless Summer Camp, a teacher of English at a school in Panama, and she plans to study marketing at Purdue University. A teacher comment this evening from Mrs. Wolf. "Ashley deserves to be the Student of the Month. She was outstanding lead speller in the ICC Spell Bowl Meet at Lutheran. She is one of the main reasons we won the conference championship. She is also on the English academic team and is absolutely a positive role model for all students."
Just a couple of quick comments before we get to our Student of the Month. We're thrilled to start this second semester with our students. Last semester, our students earned 151 credits towards graduation, which was the most credits that our students had earned in any semester since the HEA has started. So 151 credits were earned by our students. Of those credits earned, five of our students graduated last semester and finished those requirements. So we want to congratulate those students on their success. We started this week with 20, almost, I think we're down to 22 new students, so we welcome all of those students as they continue to work towards their goal of graduation. So we're thrilled to start this second semester with them. I want to introduce our first Student of the Month, Ashley Way. Would you like to come on up? Ashley is our November Student of the Month. Ashley is the daughter of Stephanie Gentle. She is a senior at the HEA and was nominated by our staff for her academic progress and volunteer efforts in the school community. Ashley comes to school each morning ready to work. She brings a positive attitude and friendly smile to any challenge she faces. In addition to her academic classes, Ashley volunteers on Tuesdays and Thursdays at Hornet Park Elementary, helping our kindergarten students with their work, and she also volunteers on Tuesdays and Thursdays as a Hornet Park bus monitor. Mrs. Schmal, her supervising teacher at Hornet Park, stated, "Today was Ashley's first day back from break, and she always starts with the material. Well, let me tell you that I thought a movie star walked in because the kids went nuts. They all love her. Ashley does a super job of listening to what we want her to do and always follows through. She has a great rapport with the students and truly seems to love what she does. She's a huge help to all of us on Team Common, and we all love her." Our HEA staff also offered several comments that they wanted me to share as well. Mrs. Ditten, her English teacher, stated, "Ashley was the first student I met this year. I knew she was something special from the get-go. Her big smile, her big warm smile says it all. She is a quiet leader at the HEA. She has a great work ethic and is always open to feedback and learning." Mrs. Hall stated that Ashley has found her confidence and her smile, and moves steadily ahead even when things get difficult for her. Ms. Condon, our guidance counselor, shared, "Ashley has done a wonderful job volunteering at Hornet Park and working with the younger students. This is an area in which she..." This is an area in which she excels, and I know she will continue to do great things to help the students at Hornet Park." After graduation, Ashley plans to attend college to pursue a career that involves working with the younger children. She has been a role model among her peers, and we appreciate her contributions to our learning community at the HEA. We want to congratulate her on her efforts and look forward to her future success. Our December Student of the Month is Shaylin Phillips. Shaylin is the daughter of Nicole Kinzer and Sean Phillips. She also is a senior at the HEA and was nominated by our staff for her academic progress and work ethic. Shaylin has been very determined as an HEA student. She arrives each day with a smile on her face and a very determined attitude. She works well independently and makes consistent progress toward graduation. Shaylin's extracurricular activities include being a five-year member of the Marching Corners as a group player. She also works part-time downtown at the Spaghetti Factory. HEA staff had several comments they also asked that I share about Shaylin. Mrs. Ditten stated, "Shaylin is a sassy and smart senior. Despite her busy schedule, she comes to school ready to get down to business. She is a very independent learner but doesn't hesitate to ask for help if needed. Shaylin is also my English guru. You can count on her to think deeply and extend her thoughts in writing. She is also quick to participate in our class discussions." Mr. Cahill, our math teacher, stated that Shaylin is very respectful and courteous to all staff and her peers. She works diligently to meet deadlines and earn credits. When needed, Shaylin will seek out additional help from staff to support her own success. Ms. Thomas shared that Shaylin has a very strong work ethic and she strives to manage an academic schedule, her extracurricular activities, and a part-time job with an optimistic attitude. After high school, Shaylin plans to attend Ivy Tech and pursue a career in nursing. She is interested in the field of pediatric medicine and hopes to become a pediatric oncology nurse. Shaylin has been a leader among her peers. She strives to be the best she can be and influence others around her with her positive attitude. We appreciate all that she has brought to our community and look forward to her continued success as well.
I didn't know I had to make a red one. But I got a couple of things to report.
Okay.
One is that makes a lot of difference for our teachers in middle school. We just found out that she's got a Lily Adelman Teacher Creativity Grant.
Oh, cool.
And that's for her rejuvenation and all that, and I know that Dr. Anna helped her a little bit with that. I interviewed Jonna today and talked about it, but it's a really neat grant. She's going to go to Kansas and she'd like this big art adventure with several people from across the country. So, it's really exciting news, but that's a, that's a great thing for Beech Grove School and for Jonna to get that. She's one of like 100 teachers from across the state that are receiving that grant. So, that's pretty cool. For Beech Grove Education Foundation, we're redoing the grant form to make it a little bit easier for our teachers, and we're also, it will be made out earlier in the year. So, it will be going out pretty soon because we just found that teachers kind of had fatigue at the end of the year trying to get grants when they were due previously. So, we're trying to move that up for them to, to help them a little bit there that way. And then, if you looked at all the donations received and the report this time, you probably saw a lot from Donors Choose. And the Beech Grove Education Foundation, we fund a $10,000 grant to Donors Choose specifically for our teachers. And so far, they've used a little over $6,000 of that $10,000 grant this school year since August. And so, we're real excited about that. We enjoy doing that annual grant because just another way to infuse more dollars into the classroom to benefit our students and teachers. So, that's about it, just a few highlights for today. Okay. Thank you. You're welcome. Our next item would be to approve our minutes of our November 10th regular meeting and December 8th work session.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
It's been moved by Mrs. King, seconded by Mr. Skirvin, to approve the November 10th regular board meeting minutes and the December 8th work session meeting minutes as presented. Any comments or questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. The next item on the agenda will be our claims for November, I'm sorry, for December and The comments or questions before we ask a public on oath.
Motion to approve.
I'll second. It has been moved by Mr. Skirvin, seconded by Mrs. Smiley, to approve the claims for December and January. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. I don't think there'll be any public comment. Dr. Keely?
First order of business for the business report is that we work with Valick as our retirement manager, and they kind of advise me on legal aspects and different things every year. And something that's come up here to end 15 was that we had made some motions. We had approved as a board to change some of the vesting schedules to, we used to have teachers, administrators, certified individuals not be able to access any retirement dollars in VIBA or 401A, certain retirement accounts unless they retired from this school corporation. Well, we talked a little bit about that. If money's put in there, a salary over years and years and years, and then they were to leave to take an administrative post in their last five years, they lose the entire dollar amount that is allocated to them. So, we had talked about this a couple of years ago, and we came up with a vesting schedule of five years. As long as you work as a diligent employee for five years, you should meet the criteria to be vested in Beech Grove City Schools Retirement Accounts because the money was put in there on your behalf. And so, that was changed. So, in talking to the Valick rep over our vesting, there were little things in there that we had tweaked and changed, as well as federal law changed with the dollar amounts that can be put into annual dollar amounts. And so, we've restated that entire document, plan document for retirement, vesting schedules, all of the qualifications and all the things called 403B, 403B matching, 401A, and VIBA. And so, those are all managed under Valick. And so, the document itself is quite lengthy. What I provided to you is an executive summary and then some signature pages for that. So, can I answer any questions about retirement? Is that it? If not, I think that it is appropriate to pass a motion and approve the restatement of the Valick retirement account.
Motion to approve the resolution authorizing.
I'll second. It's been moved by Mrs. Story, seconded by Mrs. King, to approve the resolution amendment of the retirement plan. Any comments or questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Second item of business is a transfer of dollars. Anytime we transfer dollars, we leave it somewhere from December 31 to January 1, we need to let the board know. And so, we transferred, we have two different debt service accounts. One's called pension debt service. The other is our regular debt service. Our regular debt service pays mortgage payments, things like that. Because of the circuit breaker and protected taxes, dollars were allocated in pension debt service too high, and to get that corrected here in the first part of 2016, we needed to transfer from a cash flow basis $200,000 to make sure that all accounts were, nothing was in the red at the conclusion of 2015. And I cannot, you know, tell you that I'm very proud to tell you that nothing was in the red to end the calendar year, but we do need to pay back that $200,000 and then reallocate our debt service here in 2016. That can be accomplished here in the first, we exceeded four and a half, you know, $2.7 million on January 4th, so we don't have a cash flow issue anymore, so the monies can be transferred directly back at this time.
So, we're transferring, then we'll transfer back in the next month or so.
It is considered a temporary, that is correct, and it is duly noted actually in the account balances at the end of the year that it is a temporary loan. So, it's just, you never like to see red on any of your balance sheets, and so Kathy Stanser and I take that to heart, so we made sure that we didn't see anything like that. So, it was a three-day loan to ourselves. It is now paid back.
I'll make a motion to transfer $200,000 from the Pension Bonds Debt Service Fund.
I'll second. It's been moved by Mr. Skirvin, seconded by Mrs. Story, to transfer the Pension Bond Debt Service Fund dollars until the tax anticipation warrants are received. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Any comments on personnel?
I wrote a statement, a paragraph for you, and just to highlight that Anthony Osborne is now helping at Hornet Park, and I think we're very, we're all very pleased with that. And I think the process went very well, very transparent, and it was very detailed, and it was exciting to see the talent. We interviewed five, is that correct?
All interim candidates.
Yeah, all interim candidates, and I would tell you what, we've got some all-stars. I think three out of the five could have stepped in there on January 4th and started and been effective from day one. So, we have some very talented teachers in our district, counselors, people like that who, our philosophy of building leadership within is really a neat thing, and I think that it shined. Would you agree?
I did. It was really, it was wonderful to see not only the excellent candidates that came through, but then the potential and what that means for the future of leadership in our district. So, it was a really neat process, so thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Rather sat in on the interviews with us, and I think we really enjoyed getting to know a lot of those staff members. Anthony Osborne was the appropriate choice, and we're excited to see him start this month.
I'll make a motion to approve the put in recommendations.
I'll second it. It's been moved by Mrs. Smiley, seconded by Mrs. Mobley, to approve the employment recommendations as presented. Any comments or questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Mr. Rayer?
Good evening, everyone. First of all, just like to update everyone on the construction. I think that's kind of the, one of the exciting things going on in our district at this point. We pretty much have officially, or towards the very end of our HVAC installation at buildings, there is some final carpentry and just final balancing, but for the most part, things are in, the cabinry is being pretty much installed, just kind of those final touch-ups, so we're, we're pretty excited about that. The performing arts edition construction is underway. If you stop by, you can kind of see some progress occurring there. Monday was supposed to be the day that we poured our footings, the footers, with the construction that, or with the weather that pushed that back. We have another update tomorrow, a construction update at 8:00 AM, so it'll kind of give us an idea of what the weather has done. But we were looking at pouring footers Monday, and the next Monday, we're going to start the block walls. So, all the block walls would be, started Monday, and it'd be about a three to four week process with the steel coming in about the delivery of middle of February. And so, they're hoping that by the end of February, they're ready to start buttoning it up and allow them to start working on the inside of it. That's where it always starts kicking up because it is mainly a big square, and once they get it, you know, buttoned up, they can kind of really start going at it. So, that's where it always starts off and speeds up. So, that's kind of an exciting thing, but we'll see how this weather sets back the last couple of days toward our construction update. With the buses, as you know, we had to borrow three buses throughout the fall. We had an increase in, in students, and we also had some older buses, and it was very nice to see Wayne Township, they just came out and supported us, and for the most part, just let us borrow the buses. I believe it was like $100 total to lease the buses. And that was more of a, from a legal standpoint, was the reason that $100 was in place. So, you know, as I told someone, you know, Dr. Catcher, Dr. Keely, just that, that ability for other districts to share with each other and help each other out is just kind of a very neat thing. So, we were just kind of looking for some used buses that were quality buses so that we could continue to improve our fleet, and we did find that in December. And it came up pretty quickly where it was kind of a very fast thing, so we went ahead and purchased three very low mileage buses for about the price of one and a half buses.
I was going to say, isn't that pretty cheap?
A new bus now is about $120,000. And so, we got three two-year-old buses with around 20,000 miles each for $150. So, it was very good on Mr. Cox's part to kind of keep his eye open on that. We found these over at Callister's, so we're very excited about that. It's really, it's allowed us to keep a couple of the older buses as spares, and so now we're not in that situation where it's an emergency. We have a couple backups, and it's been very beneficial, so.
Why would a school get rid of a bus that quickly?
Well, some states, like Illinois, some, they lease them for one year, and they just keep rotating their fleet every year. That's kind of an Illinois process. Other school districts do three-year leases. Some districts just don't have the financial, they don't have like financial limitations or very well. So, they feel that if they lease them for three years, there's just hardly any maintenance, and it saves the maintenance costs. Where for us, that philosophy just doesn't, it's not an effective strategy because of our inability to receive any money in our bus replacement fund. So, we do a little different strategy where we buy quality, or try to buy quality used buses, and that's something that Dr. Keely and, and Mr. Cox and I have started to focus on was really improving our fleet, which we did. If you remember, beginning of last year, we really did a nice job getting some buses over the school year last year. This year, our plan is no new buses, so we kind of put ourselves in a real good spot last year with the ones we found, so we'll be status quo for this year. Real positive year in terms of finding good quality buses, so.
That purchase was also allowed us to not have to lease the three new buses that we had in the three-year plan, and that's a big deal to me, to the school preparation because that means there's not a mandatory payment in 2016. We own, and that's a lot different than having this, you know, the ownership of we continue to have this lease payment every year. That's something that I really, you know, we've worked together hard to talk about. Anytime we can avoid, you know, that payment always being over outside and, you know, you know it's coming. We try to avoid, but this was an opportunity, and it was a great opportunity. Mr. Rayer is absolutely correct. The tax base for the assessed valuation in some districts is just considerably higher than what we, what we're able to have with TIF districts and different things going on. So, they do rotate routinely, and now I'm really happy to look at the bus replacement schedule. We don't have this 15, 16-year-old fleet. We've replaced some of the oldest buses. That was, that was really godsend, so it was really good.
Final comment I'd make is because our, our density is so small, we can, we can have a bus go a lot longer. We're not putting miles on it. Or if you live in more, it's been all our, our Thalberg County, you know, suddenly by itself, you're putting a lot of extra miles on it. So, go in the shop, get a good quality bus at this price, it's outstanding. I should have been doing it a much sooner than this, but the market's a little bit different out there. McAllister's now in the market, Curlin out north by Warsaw, and then you have another one up in Lebanon, so there's a little bit more competition for that to handle. And plus, our service center has gone on in, and they're kind of the state rep for bidding buses that we're part of. These came outside of that, but it's just, schools are turning forward quicker, a little graphic.
I'd just like to ask for a motion to approve the purchase of those three buses that occurred on December 28th. I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of the buses.
It's been moved by Mr. Skirvin, seconded by Mrs. King, to approve the purchase of the three buses. Any comments or questions on those? Good job though, keeping the, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
The final update tonight is kind of an exciting one as we kind of reach some of our goals that we set up with VersaTrans. The transportation department was able to get MyStop GPS program functioning at all the schools. the schools and are working hard to maintain that. And hopefully, parents are finding it to be a beneficial situation. I know the media called Melanie Monday morning at 4:30 to ask about what Beach Grove does for their schools in terms of the weather. You know, that's, that's kind of a positive thing when it's 12 below like it's supposed to be tonight in terms of windshield. If you have a general idea of the buses running out of time, you can get on the MyStop GPS site and get a very, you know, pretty solid idea of where the bus is and, you know, you're not, you're not guessing where it's at. And also will allow us to, how we're going to set it up in Skyward and VersaTrans is if there is any bus issues, we can call those parents directly of that bus and have a message go out to bus 12 parents, you know, the bus is 12 minutes late, 20 minutes late due to mechanical problems or, or something of that nature.
Or bus number change.
A bus number change, absolutely. So, so that's just some of the exciting things that are kind of going on there. Our next goal, since we accomplished the GPS, is that we're going to, which we've already started, is the implementation of the Fleet Vision, which is the inventory, the preventive maintenance and the records for all the buses. Our transportation guys are currently entering all the vendors into the inventory system. It's quite a process and it'll probably be going on throughout the spring. When you think of all the places that you buy fuel, parts, seats, you know, all kinds of things, it's, it's quite extensive, so we're working on putting that together. And so that will be our goal is, is to work on that throughout the spring and the summer and use that as a tool to, when we think about bus purchases in the future, you might always say, well, let's sell the oldest bus. But in reality, if you have the records, that may not be the case. Your oldest bus may be one of your least costly buses in terms of repairs and things. So we want to be able to make more effective decisions and use that data that that tool can provide. So that's what we're excited about, VersaTrans.
We have an account line in the finances that tracks exactly the total, the dollar amount that we spent during 2015 on repairs. So bus maintenance repairs is a one account line. We spent over $100,000 in 2015. That tells us that, number one, we needed three new buses and we needed to get rid of three. The used buses, they're much better and much newer, are replacing those 12, 15-year-olds. To cost save and then to track exactly the oil changes, maintenance should not be replacement of transmissions. It should be oil changes. And that's, that vision is going to help us financially, just keep it, keep track of what we're doing. Because that is, that is a lot of money, a $900,000 budget, where $600,000 gets personnel, 100-plus is way too much money for that kind of maintenance. So this is really going to help us understand better what we're doing there. So it's going to be very prescriptive and good data.
So in regards to operations, that's all I have. There are some, the most donations that were provided, there were quite a few with the Donors Choose, as Melanie explained. Also then, a few of the fundraisers there and the overnight wrestling field trip, so.
Motion to approve the donations.
I'll second. It's been moved by Mrs. Story, seconded by Mrs. Smiley, to approve the donations as presented. Any questions or comments?
I'm thinking in the future that there might be a Pioneer Field.
I'm sorry?
I'm looking at it. The amount of donations at Pioneer, which we greatly appreciate, is quite substantial.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Fundraiser request.
I'll make a motion to approve fundraiser request as presented.
I'll second.
It's been moved by Mrs. Skirvin, seconded by Mrs. Story, to approve the fundraiser request as presented. Any questions on those? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
I'll also make a motion to affirm the true approval to the wrestling overnight field trip.
I'll second.
It's been moved by Mrs., Mr. Skirvin, I'm sorry, seconded by Mrs. Smiley, to approve the overnight wrestling trip that took place. Any comments on that? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We don't have any policy updates here? No. Anybody have any committee or community reports this evening?
I would add that I've had the second, two meetings with the Marion County Parks Department Education Foundation Board. And we met with Mayor Buckley yesterday, who's part of our second meeting. Tom Supanzik, who worked for the school corporations on the Parks Foundation Board. And we're looking at trying to establish a community garden here at Beach Grove as early as this spring. So we're looking at South Grove as that possible location. If you kind of look to the, to east down the hill there, that grassy area, must stay out of the soccer practice area.
Opposed? Nobody been on what it might have been for us?
But it's really, it's a really exciting opportunity where we would grow food, tie in our kids, that would tie into a pantry opportunity and also opportunity for community members to actually put a little plot down there and tell it. And the seeds would all be donated through the foundation, Parks for the Company. So one of the initial stages of that, and we had our second meeting yesterday, and we're real excited about that as a future opportunity for our community.
Rest in peace Naomi Weaver.
Wonderful lady, super lady.
There is our middle school secretary. Is that what she was? Or treasurer, treasurer and secretary at the middle school for many years.
She voted in every election from the time she was 18 until this past November. She voted in every election. I was very proud of her, so.
Any other comments or suggestions or for the good of the cause or anything?
Just that when this part is over, we need to have a very short board of finance meeting before we sign all the paperwork.
Okay.
Then we'll have a very short work session after that.
Okay. Okay. If there is no further business, then no questions. I want to give one of the six. Okay. It's been moved by Mrs. Story, Mrs. Story, seconded by Mr. Skirvin, to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion to adjourn. We need to adjourn.